I'd like to welcome participants to the virtual planning board meeting of May 2. I'd like to take a call to order. Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Mr. Lucio will not be joining us tonight. Ms. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
President.
Mr. Olney?
Mayor.
And Ms. Tenny?
Here.
Thank you. Looks like we have a quorum. I'd like to remind all board members and guests to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak. And this meeting is being recorded. Before we start, I'd like to take a minute to acknowledge the passage of the change of use by law in the LCD east of School Street. As you all are aware, we voted unanimously, and I would like to acknowledge the hard work the board did has put in for this bylaw change. And I especially like to recognize Gary Gilbert and Sarah Creighton for their professional presentations at town meeting last week.
Thank you.
Okay, so as you know, this is kind of a working workshop meeting on recodification. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Sarah Creighton to discuss the agenda items on recodification.
Okay, great. Thank you, and thanks to anybody who's tuning in. This is our working session to talk about the zoning changes that we've been talking about for, I guess, over two years as a board. To try to make our zoning clearer in compliance with state law, case law, and to delete redundancies and to just generally update things. So I'm going to share my screen. Gary, are you able to share your camera? I think that's the best practice if we can do that. Oops. Okay, can you see my? It says May 2. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So I need somebody to, Chris or Ron, I guess, when people raise their hands or something. Because I can't, when I share my screen, for some reason, I can't seem to see those, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just, so I thought we'd start by saying where we are with all of the stuff we've been working on. This is just a summary. Sections 1 through 4, we voted to have those ready for public hearing. We just need to add in that language that if there's a discrepancy between the definitions and the body, and the body of the bylaw, the body of the bylaw prevails. I have a couple of updates on, we're not going to talk, I just want to run this through you, and then I have some updates that I know Mary asked about in an email, so hopefully that will cover this. That tonight, we're going to talk about section 6, section 12, which is administration. We've, with a couple of exceptions, I think we're ready for a public hearing, adult entertainment, same thing, senior housing. I've got to share something about that in a minute. Non-conforming use. We did ask Mark Bobrowski to look at that. Any word from him on that, Sue?
I have not heard anything from Mr. Bobrowski.
All right. Residential cluster and ADUs, we're going to talk about tonight. The general bylaws sections, again, I have a couple of details on that, but the Board of Selectmen is going to actually discuss that a little bit tonight in their meeting. And then we thought that the language about ministerial, the authorizing the town clerk or the board of the planning board to add, to take ministerial changes that was in the warrant the other night was a good thing to add, so we'll figure out how to do that. You know, if numbers are wrong or that kind of stuff, we thought that was a good idea. So, let me, I'm going to jump ahead. What we've done is the format things, I removed all the line numbers, removed the existing bylaw. It turns out that the town clerk was worried about that being confusing and what was the real bylaw, what was not. She didn't want people to be confused about what the existing bylaw was. I cleaned up the font in a lot of these, tried to make them all the same. And we were able to change that section for table of uses to a portrait orientation so that everything is line. You know, we'd have to turn, turn, just to make it easier to print and all the rest. The other thing I did is, Chris and I went through them as we said we would, we added a couple of definitions. Residential conservation cluster, I just pulled that from our existing bylaw. Ledge was not specified, so we pulled a definition from someplace, I don't know where Chris got that. And then we cleaned up the language on home occupation. Previously, it had doctors' offices, and then it also regulated where there were signs, and so the definition had a bunch of regulations in it about signs. And so we simplified it to customary home occupations as shown here. And the reason I deleted doctors' offices is that in the use table, doctors' offices was called out as an allowed use separate from home occupation, so it was redundant. So that's in the definition section. Any questions on that? Sue? Because I can't see yours.
I just wonder, in the residential, if we, a residential conservation cluster could also allow no lots, no lots, as in, you know, as in a condominium type townhouse, which wouldn't have lots. Should we allow for that in our definition?
Why don't we take that up when we talk about residential cluster? Can somebody make a note? Talked about it. Yeah, Mary, go ahead.
Our current bylaws do have a definition for ledge on, under 6.16.2, so that's changed. I don't know if it's substantial.
Sorry, is it a material difference?
There's more specifics in our current definition.
I'm happy to just use whatever our current definition is, if people don't mind, we can just substitute that in. So, does that make sense? We have consensus that will substitute the ledge definition in 6.1?
Could you read it? If it's not too long?
But what is the section, Mary?
6.16.2.
And it's in 16, yeah. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, that'd be great, Sue.
Ledge means a boulder or rock formation, whether or not cracked or broken into contiguous pieces. One, which has a volume of three or more cubic yards, or two, the removal of all or any part of which, in the opinion of the building inspector, or as proposed by the lot owner, normally would involve either blasting or ho-ramming. Such ledge is an exposed ledge if it is uncovered surface area is 50 or more square feet.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
So I think Chris and I looked at this, and maybe Gary too, and we did look back at that definition, and there, we were trying to simplify with the references to volumes and who was deciding what it was alleged. And so that was why we proposed this simplified definition.
So where are the, where are these definitions being discussed? I wasn't part of a discussion.
So at the, so this is our discussion. These are, we, this is my, we were allowed to make administrative changes, and I'm being very transparent about those changes, so this is our discussion. This is.
Okay, because Laura said that she had been discussing with.
Well, there was a draft, Gary.
We have a draft, which is up.
Which we're getting to in section 6. But the, so it makes sense to take definitions, we're trying to take definitions out of the body of the zoning. And the question before us this moment is, do we want to have a simplified definition of ledge? Or do we want to have a more complex definition that is currently in the current bylaw? And I think the recommendation from Laura as a landscape architect, talking to Chris, section 6, is that it makes sense to have something simpler. I don't have a strong feeling about it.
So Laura, can you tell me the difference between the two definitions, what we would be gaining or end or losing, or is it neutral?
The, sure, Mary, the, what I read of the previous definition is it leaves more open to interpretation, whether the building inspector determines it's alleged. So you need building inspector input, whether it's something that you're going to take a ho ram or another piece of equipment to versus just more of a, having less to do with the built environment and construction methods than just what is the sort of natural definition of a ledge? A more neutral definition of it, not getting into building technologies and so forth, is what I was proposing here.
So isn't the.
A couple of dictionary definitions.
Isn't the issue, I'm sorry, isn't the issue here is by leaving us with a more broad definition, we actually are more inclusive about, across a number of these proposals, particularly in section 6, is that actually breadth gives us greater jurisdiction and greater opportunities for best practices. When you get super specific, then the bizarre exception, if you're removing it with something other than a ho ram or blasting, then it's not ledge, for example. I mean, as an extreme. And so I think that the opportunity here is to be, to lead us to best practices, because when you're prescriptive, you sometimes have unintended consequences. And certainly, the, I know in the construction industry, for example, we try to be prescriptive in certain things, but try to use best practices and performance-based standards, which are outcome-driven rather than widget-driven, you know, checklist-driven. And that's, I think, what the goal of the proposed rewrite of section 6, from which this derived.
Yes, that's a good summary. Thank you.
So I think that, I think we all tend to want to define everything extensively, because it feels that we're being inclusive, but it turns out that best practices generally are spaced, not prescriptive, so.
So does anybody object to keeping this current shortened version?
No objection here.
Okay.
My only follow-up question would be, is if the, this says refers to contiguous boulder or rock formations, and if that encompasses what we have here, whereas it means a boulder or rock formation, whether or not cracked or broken into contiguous pieces. So I just want to make sure we are encompassing all ledge.
Yes, I think if you look, if you spend more time studying what a ledge is, it could certainly be cracked and broken and still qualify as a ledge. I don't think we need to state that. Again, it's, you know, the more you say it includes this, you may risk out leaving, but not that. So I think we're trying to make a generally understood statement that it is contiguous, and it can be either above ground or underground, visible or not, and it is, you know, ground surface materials, older and boulder and rock formations. So it's a kind of rock, and it's not just a loose thing that you can knock aside, but it's contiguous, making it a larger piece of rock qualifying it as a ledge.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay. So, moving on, we, I added the LCD changes that were adopted on Monday to section 4's table in the notes. I just did that after Monday's meeting, so section 5 obviously had changes at Monday's meeting, but we do not have any section 5 changes proposed for the next town meeting. So that's not relevant to any of our drafts. Makes sense? I realized also when we were going through this that the used table needed to be updated with some of our proposed changes. So the two that I found were relevant were senior housing and ADUs. So we, I added in the motion, or the draft motion, or the draft for the senior housing that we did approve, that, that we added in, I added in a section that said amend the zoning bylaws by adding a row to table 1 in section 4, which is our use table, to indicate, should say indicate, not indicates, senior housing as an allowed use in the following districts. And I listed them as opposed to saying all districts, so that it was easier to call that out in the public hearing. At the end of our last discussion of this, we had a very brief discussion about whether it should be allowed in the limited commercial district. And Chris and I talked about what our strategy should be there and thought that it would be a good thing to get input on in the public hearing, and therefore to leave it inclusive in advance of the public hearing, and then we can always pull it back. And it's easier to pull it back if it's, and clearer if they're listed, if they're all, all the districts are listed. Just administratively easier. Makes sense?
I would add that this is all the same motion, so that if you're allowing senior housing by special permit, you're also going to be making this changes to the table in the same motion, so.
Right, right. It was in the, that's why I called it in the senior housing. And in the PDFs for the public, it's included in the, in that, so, as it is on our SharePoint. Similarly, we're going to talk about ADUs in a minute, so we're not going to evaluate this right here, but I wanted to let you know that administratively, I did the same thing. Delete the accessory use number 7 from the table of uses. That accessory use says is part of an existing garage, stable, or other structure for employer and owner occupant. So currently, we allow ADUs for that use. We would delete that, and that we would modify the use to a combination of yes and ZBA in those residential districts where ADUs are allowed, if this bylaw were to move forward. So this is part of that bylaw proposal. So we'll come back to that in a minute. To evaluate, because we haven't, we have not discussed this, but I wanted to let you know that in the material that we, that are, that's there on SharePoint, this is there. The other thing in. Yeah.
Sue, Sue has her hands.
I just, on back, back on the senior housing, I just wanted to know, should that, should that say, and allow, to indicate senior housing as an allowed use by special permit in the following district? Do you think that would preclude some?
Yes, because it is by special permit, right?
Yes, always.
Okay, um, yes, so senior housing. So yes, it should say by special permit, thank you, by special permit. In each, in districts. Okay, good. I'll make that change. We had in section 12, the one that we approved, the powers, that the ZBA was the primary special granting body, and we deleted that because that's not really accurate. And then we're going to talk a little bit tonight later about the special permit. We have a lot of special permit stuff in both section 12 and section 6. And so we have some thoughts about that. Mary, do you have some, Mary, question, comment?
Yeah, I had a comment on the senior housing. I wasn't able to attend that meeting. My question with having it in the LCD, we're currently, obviously, the LCD is only commercial. Are you stipulating that it's just for, you know, like assisted living and more of a medical senior housing as opposed to housing?
I think we have it as any of the senior housing options currently. So I think, like I said, we had a discussion briefly about whether or not it should be in the LCD. And I think, it's my opinion that we can get input from the public on that and that question. It hasn't been decided. This isn't, all we're doing now is proposing things for the public hearing. We're not finalizing the articles for town meeting.
Understood, but is the planning board proposing housing in the LCD at this point, for senior housing?
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Alan?
Thank you, sir. When I looked at the agenda, it looked to me as though it would be helpful for me to attend this meeting. But the discussion you're having so far is at a level of detail, which I'm sure I will eventually need to understand, but as of tonight, I really don't. I'm happy to stay on if, if my presence or participation will be useful as the meeting goes on, but if, if you think not, then I'll sign off.
Well, let's, let's, okay, let's use your, the fact you're here and jump ahead. I think that's a good thing. Let me go ahead to, sorry, timeline. Which I think is relevant to you, Alan, just so you know. We have a regular meeting on the 9th, and we are currently scheduled to have a public hearing on the 17th and continue to the 18th if necessary. And potentially, we talked about having a second hearing on May 23rd. I'm thinking we may not need that now. The warrant closes on May 24th and June, and it's still June 11th at 1:00 PM as the, still the town meeting date.
That's, that's, that's correct, although I've heard from at least one member of the Board of Selectmen that there's, there's a lot of feedback from people who would rather be doing something else on a Saturday afternoon in June. So it's not up to me, it's up to the selectmen, but that may change.
Alan, do you know what's on beside the recodification items? Is there other town business?
There may be, I think they are talking about possibly putting on, but they're not, they haven't made a decision yet, the switch from a seven-member planning board to five members and appointed rather than elected. And I know, I'm sure they'll be consulting with you about that, if they haven't already. Maybe, maybe one or two other things that I don't recall off the top of my head, but certainly recodification will be the principal focus of a meeting. And if it switches from Saturday afternoon to an evening, my guess is it'll probably take two evenings.
Isn't public dispatch supposed to be one of the, or location or dispatch?
No, public, public dispatch is a ballot question on the election.
Oh, okay.
It's not going to be at town meeting.
Okay.
Thank heavens.
So I think that's the update for you right now, Alan.
Okay, I think, I think I have all these dates in my calendar, but if you wouldn't, yeah, that would be great if you would do that.
Yeah.
The other thing I would just mention is Ron emailed me this afternoon asking if the screen would be available for presentation of the zoning amendments. And my answer is absolutely yes. Certainly, I would, I would have no objection to that and would encourage it. Two problems with that. One, purely technical, which I think can be solved, and that is, in order to do that, we would need to be able to switch the input for the screen between the, the planning board's presentation of zoning articles and the PowerPoint application that presents, that shows the voting. I think it's pretty easy to do that. I think it requires a piece of equipment the school doesn't have, but I think that our audiovisual guy who did the sound at the special, at the annual town meeting, has a piece of equipment that will do that. The other, the other concern, though, may be more difficult to resolve, when we were testing the system before the annual town meeting, it was, it was very difficult to, to display much text on the screen. If we tried to put, for example, the whole motion in, that was going to be voted on with each article, the text became so small that it would have been difficult to read from the back of the room. And if you're presenting zoning amendments that are much more extensive, that would be even more of a problem. I, maybe, I'm happy to try and find a way to do that and test it out. But if, if the text is so small that people can't see it, it's just going to engender frustration rather than, than help.
Would there be monitors in the back of the room, or just, it's just the front screen?
We, the school does have monitors that are pretty widescreen, and our AV guy can supply more, so it would, it would be possible to do that. We didn't experiment with those, preparing for the annual, because we didn't need to. But we can certainly test it out and see whether it can be done in a way that will work.
I thought a little bit about this, and it seems to me that a summary of, a bulleted summary of each zoning change with a handout, obviously, that's the comprehensive change, might be useful. And then the other way a screen might be useful is to handle amendments, if there are any. The other, so I think we have to think a little bit about that beyond tonight. The other piece of this is that I have thought quite a bit about the order in which these need to be taken, because they're interdependent. And if one fails or succeeds, then they, you know, they, they build on each other, so, you know, if you don't pass the use table, then you don't amend it later.
Right, right. And I think, I've thought about the floor amendment possibility too, and that, the difficulty of that is compounded, because not only would you have to show the, excuse me, the proposed floor amendment on your presentation, it also requires creating, the voting software basically is a PowerPoint with add-ons to it. And in order to deal with a floor amendment, the person running the, the voting app has to create a new slide in that PowerPoint on the spot. And, and it worked pretty well at the, at the, at the annual, because the amendment that was proposed wasn't very extensive. But it takes some time to do that, and it slows things down.
Yeah. Okay, well, anything else from Alan tonight?
No, but I'm happy to stay on if you think, if you think it would be useful for me to be on later.
You're so, I don't think, I think we're dealing with trying to get these things ready for public hearing.
Okay, well, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work on this. It's, it's very impressive what you've been able to do. And I congratulate you all for getting to consensus and votes on difficult issues. You've all worked very hard.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
My pleasure.
Okay.
I'll be back again soon, I'm sure.
Okay, I'm going to go back to her. I mentioned this, I think I mentioned section 12. So we'll talk about this special permit and section 6 in a minute. The stormwater, we had talked about, we had voted, I believe, to move it to the general bylaws. Somehow, all I had moved previously in the previous version of what we are moving to general bylaws was just the standards section. And I checked with Sue, and we moved the entire section that was in the zoning to the general bylaws draft, and identified, delete that section of the zoning, and reference, and instead change it to a reference of, to the general bylaws. So now it would say that the special, with special permit, you must also comply with the stormwater provisions of general bylaws. Oh, the other thing, just going back to special permit, the current draft has reference throughout to special permit section, whatever it is, 12.5, sometimes called 11.5, sometimes called 7.5. So I changed it, and I'm hoping that, and that's why it's yellow on any of these sections, to say special permit as detailed in this bylaw. So that it doesn't. So that it doesn't reference a particular section number. So that way, if we change section numbers or some other thing happens, we, we were hopefully safe. So hopefully we'll get, that will be okay. Oops, sorry. So these are what we want to talk about tonight and we never seem to get to A D U. So I thought we would start with that. We never seem to get to section six either, but. So I think that the, I tried to summarize the issues that are in. So we can take them at a high level and if we need to take the specific language, we can, we can pull that up, but I'm trying to not scroll through mountains of text. The change from the existing. This is. Law, existing bylaw is that the minimum lot size is the existing, it shouldn't say none, it should say. As required by the district. You understand when, when I said none, I meant no premium lot size. Secondly, the proposed A D U. Allows by right up to nine hundred square feet with some certain conditions. The building inspector would oversee that. I think we've talked about all these up to twenty per year excluding the existing. Um, the new version has some specifics around the existing units that they need to be certified by the building inspector. Within the next two years. And that. By, by special permit in R D one and R D two. Or if they're constructed without, that are not in compliance with the requirements. That that are called out. So I think those, some of those things are things we were in response to our last discussion of this. Gary, do you want to add any other issues that you addressed? I'm happy to pull it up on the screen if that's helpful.
Well, the biggest thing. Is just you said excluding existing, which really covers the whole thing of the moratorium. No, amnesty, rather, the amnesty.
Right.
You said it in two words. There aren't really, we haven't really done much more tweaking that I recall Chris may weigh in.
Parking.
No, that hasn't changed at all.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any changes, actually.
Oh, yeah, one, one thing was we, instead of having them refile every five years a complete new permit. We're asking just for a, an affidavit, a legal affidavit that they're still owner occupied. Because you don't really need to do anything else. It's, it's already built and has the smoke detectors it needs.
Right, so, um. And I, I recognize as we talk through this that there may not be agreement that this is. The accessory dwelling units is a good, that doing these changes are a good thing. So we will take a vote tonight as to whether or not we move this forward to the public hearing in this form, so. There may not be an agreement that we should, so I'm, I recognize that, but. So these are the changes that since the last time we talked about it. I think they have been out there for two weeks. I have not changed anything. And. So owner occupied, twenty units, no limit in the amount of permits for pre-existing A D U's if they obtain a permit. They're not, they have to write written lease. And just some, some sort of housekeeping kinds of things renewed every five years to reaffirm the owner occupancy. Uh, I think the section wrong, uh, that's, that's correct. Um, and then if there's a special permit, it's the Z B A. So, um, anybody want to think?
I'd like to make a motion that we, we bring the amended A D U language to the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, um, discussion, Mary, you have your hand up.
Thanks, um, I am compelled to reiterate what I have. Said every single time with the A D U's. We've never gathered the data. We have no idea. I mean, I. I think the town plan or the building inspector and the assessor should easily be able to determine how many legal and illegal. A D U's that we have. So absent that data, we're just kind of shooting darts, saying we need to change this. Because we don't, we don't actually know why. I think that. I don't think that our current bylaw is restrictive for people to build A D U's if they truly want to build it for, you know, what this proposes, the aging in place. Downsizing, senior housing, things like that, so. You know, we haven't addressed the, the burden that this is going to place on the building inspector. It's exacerbating parking issues. It's reducing the buffer. It's obviously creating it by right. And so, you know, we've, we've removed the two times the lot size required. The setback requirements are different. It removes the public hearing process. It becomes by right. It, it changed from four off-street parking spaces to three. The owner occupied requirement went down to six months. You know, what's going to prevent both of these being rented out at the same time? I think that this needs a lot more. Review and data to say this is what is good for Manchester, I think especially in light of. All the other potential changes going on with forty B, forty A. All the other potential zoning amendments, so I would be a big no in this form of. Pushing this through to. Public forum.
Fair enough. Can I, um, Susan, but I know you have a comment, Sue. Well, go ahead.
It was very, it was a very simple comment, just in regards to the, the lack of data. There's a, there's technical reasons why it's not easy to count them mainly to do with how units are identified by the assessor. But I didn't want to really respond to that. What I wanted to say is that regardless of how many units. Are there and it doesn't matter whether there are five units in town or if there are five hundred units in town. What we know is that we don't have adequate housing, so the number that exists is really irrelevant. And this has been brought out by our last two building, our last two housing production plans. And it's a longstanding and it was called out in master plans before this, so this is a. Longstanding solution that just hasn't been applied, so I just want people to, to understand that it, it really doesn't matter how many units there are existing. We still know that there's a housing shortage and this is a very. A natural way to help address that in a minimal way, I think.
Okay, any other comments on the, on the motion? Mary, you have another comment?
Yeah, my, my only comment back to, to Sue is that, you know, unfortunately. The master plan and the housing production plan. Were done pre-COVID, they were done pre-forty B, they were done pre-forty A. So I think it, it's, you know. We're not looking at the same scenarios, so I think that it's hard to fall back on, well, this isn't in the. Master plan. I, I think there's too many variables that have changed that should be addressed in a meaningful way.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Um, all right, uh, let's see, I'll take a roll call vote. Mary, I'll let you go first.
No.
Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Gary?
Absolutely.
Ron?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So the motion carries to move this forward to a public hearing. Oh, shoot, I wanted to raise one other issue on this, so sorry for, I thought I had it elsewhere. Um, sorry for this. In the A D U's, we currently have, here we go. We allow A D U's as part of an existing garage, stable or other structure. And it's my opinion, I'd like, I would like to see a motion for us to delete that accessory use. We have heard that from the zoning board of appeals and as part of this presentation. I, I don't think we have previously discussed this, but I would like to propose, I'd like to hear a motion. Or I would wondering if anybody else agrees with me and if so, if somebody would like to make a motion to delete the accessory. Use for employees of the owner occupant, family living quarters or employee.
Sure, I'll make a motion to delete accessory use number seven. Uh, on the condition that the accessory use. By law that we're proposing passes.
Yeah, I was thinking it, it's part of the, the package that we would put together, would be part of the, the, yes. I have a second. I'll second it if, if that's allowed to get on the table. Laura?
Thanks, I'm trying to understand the objection because I just, I don't remember seeing this before, so, or this, this clause, not that we didn't discuss it, but. Is it the fact that it could be in a garage or a stable or other structure or is it the employee part? Can you just explain for me?
I think that, um, the, what the, as I understand it, we've heard from Sarah Melish, is that this seems to be a very common. Way that people are kind of skirting around. The special permit intent and getting it by right as opposed to sort of going through what we, what we're now calling, trying to create is a. More mainstream best practices A D U and that this exemption essentially. Has been widely used for almost every A D U is what I'm.
So it's kind of a loophole.
It's kind of a loophole and that's what Sarah Melish has said. So that's at least what I've heard her say. And I think she has repeatedly come and said, this is what everybody comes and says, and we have no way of knowing. That that's what, we don't ask them to, after they get their A D U to, to certify ever again. That it's a employee member or employee or a, you know, number. And so you can say that it's for your mother and then immediately change it.
Yeah, it doesn't need, it doesn't include your mother. It's only for employees. It's not even.
You have to hire your mother.
Yeah, to hire your mother, right.
Yeah. Okay, I wasn't, I thought maybe it was objecting to the garage or stable and I.
No, I think it's the, it's kind of a loophole.
Yeah.
Okay, motion on the table. Thank you, Laura. Um, Mary, do you have a comment on this motion, the motion to add that as part of the? What we just voted? That's, that's, that's what I, I'm hoping is the motion. Nope, you're muted.
Geez, I, I was unmuted and then I muted. Um, the, so this is. Basically saying that A D U's cannot be, in reference, A D U's cannot be in detached structures, correct?
Correct.
And then how with, I guess the building inspector is, is the proposed record keeper. What happens to these existing units that then? You know, get rented out or whatever.
Existing units that are currently A D U's would be exempt, just the way any. Existing use prior to its change in zoning on any use, correct, is, is. Grandfathers. In not A D U's, but A D U's or. Candles or, you know.
But I think with any of these that have gone through the, or should have, that, that went through the Z B A process. They usually have a stipulation that, you know, once that. Employee or whatever it may be. Is no longer employed, then that, that is, structure is not allowed to be used for occupancy, right, so. Okay, I guess it's, it's just a big, it's a loophole then.
Yeah, well, once. Once somebody moves out who is an employee, there's no way, there's no way to stop anyone from renting it to somebody else.
So now we would create a certification process where if their grandfathering was conditioned. On having an employee there, one would think you would have to go back and certify it. No? Maybe that might be.
Well, the building inspector wouldn't have this in his file of A D U, so I guess it's, it's. It's just, it's just an administrative issue.
Yes, you're right. Okay, um, so we have a motion, any other discussion? Um, all in favor, I mean, I guess I have to take a vote. Uh, Ron first.
Yes, yes.
Mary?
We're voting strictly to remove this one section.
Correct. From the, yes, linked it to the other that we just. Provided that the other portion passes. As Chris said, okay, Chris?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay. Great, thank you. All right, let's, um, talk about the residential conservation cluster. We boiled this down to the. Let me just clarify one administrative thing. In the version for the last meeting, somehow the density bonus for additional affordability fell out of that. Draft, and so that's the only thing I added back into this version for today. So that's, that is what I did and I think I marked it in the, in the version for today. The affordability, the residential cluster issues seem to be. Um, we currently have five acres and we're proposing, when I say none, I mean, the, the lot size that is in the. Current, that is allowed in, that is required in the district. A ten percent of the units be for, deeded affordable. And then a maximum density bonus would be twenty percent. And that twenty percent could be from, I guess, two of these. Three criteria, additional open space, additional affordability. That, so when I had, I wrote this for last week and I said not in the current draft, so I fixed that. So scratch that. And other amenities in town, so if somebody is going to build a soccer field or something. Um, and that's by special permit. And then, um, so let's talk about those first and then we'll talk about the townhouse question. Which is, came up in the review. So let's, uh, Chris, you want to make a motion to accept the residential conservation cluster as writ, the May second version as written? Oh, you're a, I mean.
I move that we accept the. R C C bylaw as, as of the May second version.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, it's Ron, second, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. Excluding the issue of the townhouses, which I think we have to get to. Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, on this affordability, what if it's like a three?
Yeah.
Three unit cluster. So. We don't get any, it wouldn't, it wouldn't account, right, for affordability.
That's right, it would not be enough for an affordable unit.
I might want to be classified with a minimum.
Minimum of one.
I was thinking about that, I don't know, just a thought.
Well, I think the question is, what are we, we're trying to achieve a couple of things here, as one is affordability, but we're also trying to encourage these kinds of developments. To reduce, you know, pavement and other kinds of things. Do we want to, so I could be, I could go, the other question is we could. Get public input on that question. Either way, whichever way we come out on it tonight, we might want to call it out for public comment.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
So right now, there's not a minimum, it's simply a ten percent. So the. It would really only apply to those that have ten units or more. Is that, is that how we, it's. Is that, is that how we, it's, I think you could read it either way.
Actually, you round it up, so if it's five units or more, you get, you get a bonus of one if it's affordable.
If all other things are rounded down. So we just, if that's, if we want it to be five or more, currently it's six or more is our requirement for other types of development, which we know is not quite legal. But if we want to stay with that in general, you just need to call it out because in all other instances, for example, in the bonus, we're rounding down, so you don't get a bonus if you're a fraction of, you only get a, it only rounds up. So it rounds down in those cases, so we just need to be clear.
You want to look at the exact language? I made note that I, here, sorry. That I put the definition, I realized that there was a definition missing, so I inserted that in section two, as I said, hold you before. Let's go to the bonus question, the bonus question. So the density bonus is awarded to increase the number of units beyond the maximum number an aggregate of 20%.
Oh, so this is computations will be round to the lowest number.
Yeah, so I don't think that 10% is, affordability is required.
Yeah, it is though.
It is required, we're not taking that out right now.
Only if you have, only if you want a bonus, so I think we're looking at the wrong piece then.
Right.
Okay.
Let me look at the.
Want to look at the existing cluster language?
Not really.
That wasn't in there. It's in a separate one, wasn't it?
Yeah, see, I don't think we have a bonus.
Yeah, it's in there.
I think they get a bonus for it, but I don't know if it's required. Although we could require it.
Right, that's the question.
So we could require it of a certain number. I think it would.
Component, the existing bylaw says, as a condition of the grant of any special permit for RCC development containing six or more dwelling units, the planning board shall ensure compliance with the provision of 6.1.4 inclusionary zone, inclusionary housing.
Right, that's in the existing.
It's 8.29 in the new. Sarah, if you go to 8.29.
Thank you. It's actually nine point, yeah, affordable, sorry. Yes, I can, thank you, Laura. As a condition of the grant of any special permit, a minimum of 10% of the total number of dwellings shall be restricted in.
Right. Fractions of a, of a lot or dwelling unit shall be rounded up to the nearest old number. Such that a developer proposing six dwelling units will require one affordable unit. And 11 units shall require two affordable units.
And five none.
So that part is not in the, I don't believe, so.
Yeah, it's not, because this is the inclusionary zoning that we're leaving intact for the moment.
But it's not referenced in this one.
No, it's not referenced, that's correct.
So it should be. If we want to have. I would rather not have it reference another section.
It shouldn't reference that because that's the illegal one.
That's.
Well, so actually it does reference it, Sarah, it says, the planning board shall deny any application for a special permit for development under section 1.3, which is, you know, any, which is RCC. As a section of the applicant for a special permit does not agree to do all these things for affordable housing. So any special permit under RCC would require this currently.
Right, that's the current one.
But that's because that's in the, but that's because it's in the inclusionary zoning, not because it's in this residential cluster amendment. So we need to move that into this.
Well.
Or reference the inclusionary zoning in this version.
We could reference it, maybe it's a good idea, I don't think we, I really don't think we have to, because this says that any RCC would require it.
But that's the section that's illegal that we wanted to delete.
Well, I know, but we're not deleting it.
Well.
You're deleting it if the RCC, this new RCC goes in, right?
No, we haven't, we've left it alone.
Oh.
You said it was just one more thing that we, to take on. So can I make can I make a amendment to your motion, Chris, that we add in the affordable, that we specify the affordable component that's currently listed in the inclusionary zoning as part of this RCC language?
Sure, I'll accept that amendment.
Okay, Ronnie, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and that section is, what was the section you were just reading? Do you know what number, include inclusionary?
I don't know what it is in the new.
Okay, a zone, okay, inclusionary zoning. Affordability. So the motion has been amended, Sharon. To include the inclusionary zoning affordability requirement in, in the, in the RCC residential close, cluster proposal for town, for public hearing. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to come back to the townhouse question, let's solve, let's.
We have to vote on the motion.
I know, so I'm not going to talk about townhouses right now, so let's.
Mary has her hand up.
Yeah, I'm, I see that, thank you. Okay, and I think that this, just to finish out that, I had, we had added a note, how do we handle affordability units of smaller developments? I think the inclusionary zoning language we just added does do that. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mary, go ahead.
So referencing that you had to add, you needed to add back in the affordability piece, it's, it's in there, at least the the latest version that's posted on SharePoint now has it twice, in there twice. It was just misnumbered. So I think if you scroll up, I don't know if this is the same version.
It should be.
You know, originally it was in the 8.2.8 and you had one, two. And then the affordability was labeled 8.2.9.
Sorry. Affordability and then.
It's right there.
The affordability, there are two pieces, there's the, what I added back in, this affordability component, which is the density bonus. 2.2.9.2.8 is the density bonus. And affordability gives you additional, it gives you an additional density up to 20% for additional affordability. The other, which probably should be reordered, but nonetheless, that to, this is that a baseline conditional, you know, you must, in order to get a residential conservation cluster without any density bonus, you must have a minimum of 10% units. And now we're adding into that the language that defines that from the inclusionary.
Now, I need to make a point here, Mark Bobrowski pointed out that if you make it a mandatory thing as part of the RCC and you want, you're trying to encourage RCCs, then a developer is going to say, why bother doing a conservation cluster if I have to provide a affordable, affordable, affordable unit, which is going to make me less money?
But they have less roads and less.
Well, that's, yeah, that's right.
Sure. And that's the argument. Laura, go ahead.
Oh, I, I still had a lot more to say.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So this is quite different from what Mark Bobrowski had proposed, so I'm wondering, and there's things added since the last version, you know, a month or so ago, so who is adding in and why? Items like encourage more sensitive reuse of qualifying sites within the RD1, RD2 and G districts, so that redevelopment in these populated districts is integrated with surrounding uses and promotes compact pedestrian friendly neighborhoods.
That was a comment we got from the public hearing. That's where it came from.
Can you shoot that to me, Chris?
I don't have the minutes of the public hearing, but.
So let's just stop and worry, not worry about where it came from, do you object to that?
Well, I object to it because it's throughout the document now, which it was just added about a week ago, and that seems to be referencing for the MBTA multifamily housing. And I'm wondering why that's being put in and who's doing that? And who, and if it's a public comment, who's selecting what public, public comments get put in and what, which ones don't?
So, so we are, if you object to that language, Mary, make a motion to take it out, that's simple.
Well, and we all know how the vote's going to go, but I think my, I'm still looking for an answer to my question of who's putting this language in.
So when I was writing this up, I incorporated language from the public hearing into, into all of it.
So I think that it's the larger issue of that you, we cannot wordsmith this, every line in the, in these meetings, we're very much trying to call out change, substantive changes that are, and I guess I, I didn't call it, that, you know, have come about. This is the language that's been there for quite some time, so we can.
Sarah, it's not, like I said, I mean, trust me, I have all the versions right in front of me, this was added from two weeks ago to now, so I'm wondering why? And if Chris is saying it's from public comment, but he doesn't have anything written from the public comment, I'm just trying to find out why these are added, because to me, that's a substantive change.
So let's, I think we should focus, let's focus on whether we want to keep it in or not, let's not, we've been all the way, working, working as hard as we can to create a transparent process, I'm sorry that you don't think that it is, and I appreciate your very careful read. So if you would like to remove it because you think it's not a good idea, then I'm happy to take a motion to that effect.
Well, but, and, and I will, but Sarah, this is the only time the planning board has to discuss these. I mean, the rush is concerning to me, I think that we, you know, we never got the requested examples, we never got the requested data, we're just shooting at this and this.
Mary, okay, I would like to make a motion. I, I'm a little bit tired of this, I would like to make a motion that we stop the reconification process, put this off till next fall, so that Mary can, and others can thoroughly vet all the language, that's my motion.
I'll second it. I mean, that was very. I, I think.
We're either going ahead of this or not.
Any, any discussion on, I know we have another motion on the table, but we're going to suspend that other motion. Is there any, I will speak against Chris's motion, if I may? And that is, it takes a lot of time to get your head into these things, and it takes a lot of time, we've put a lot of time in and with Board of Selectmen and others, and the, no, we have no assurance that the board, we, we had four items on November's town meeting, and we were asked to peel back to two, where we had a request to do many of these at the April town meeting. They said, oh, please don't, let's wait, and, and this has been going on long enough, so I'm going to speak against Chris's motion. Any, Gary?
I'm also against Chris's motion, I think you can sort of tell at a glance that these, these bylaw suggestions are good ones. I don't think you need to fuss over every single sentence, every single paragraph. The principles behind them are sound. I would like to add that, for what it's worth, that at some point in the future, we should consider modifying the residential conservation cluster.
And we're only talking about Chris's motion right now.
Okay, sorry, I got sidetracked, yes.
Okay, Laura? On the Chris's motion to table everything.
Nothing on Chris's motion.
Okay, thank you. Mary, anything else on that? Okay.
No, not on that.
Okay, I'll take a vote, Chris, you go first.
No.
Gary?
No.
Ron?
No.
Laura?
Are we voting for?
To table everything until November?
No, I do not vote to table.
Mary?
No.
Okay, I vote no, all right, so we carry on. So we're talking about the residential conservation cluster and moving it forward as printed. Are there any other comments, Laura, you have your hand up on that?
Yes, thanks, you were just alluding to it, Sarah, moving the affordable component before the density bonus, I think that.
I think that makes sense, yeah. So we would reorganize, so the second piece of this, would we to reorganize this, so that section not.
8.29 or not.
Yeah, 9.9.
2.29.
2.9 would be ordered, so it comes before the density bonus.
Correct, yeah. And then you only get two of the three choices, is that right? Because you're.
No, I added in for today, for today's, I added back in the affordable piece, sorry, let me make this a little smaller. For today's, I, we had the 10% for open space.
Yeah.
Significant amenities and affordable component, we, I, this one somehow fell off in one of the versions.
But can you still only choose as a developer to do two of the three and get credit?
The maximum is 20%.
Okay. There was one typo that's been hanging on for a while, right up in 9.21, the purpose. Number three.
Okay.
Just got two more things, one, so number three.
That should be.
You got number four. And then you're going to have to, you got, yep, delete that clause because it's redundant. You just deleted it below, and then number four, and number four, so you're just going to need to renumber that first section. And my last question, and I think this maybe, maybe Chris, you can address this, there's a requirement for an HOA, a homeowners association, which I believe the intent of that is to maintain the open space. If the developer elects or the, the town agrees that the open space is put into conservation or to town, you know, nonprofit or town status, then is there still a requirement for a home for an HOA? Because couldn't you just turn over the, effectively the management and the ownership of the conservation land to the town, so it looks like you might want to answer that, maybe, are you responding to me?
No, that wasn't to that.
Okay, Chris, you, I, I'm just wondering if an HOA is also a little bit of a disincentive sometimes? And whether it's a requirement of RCC typically?
Well, they could be, it could be a very simple one. But that's, that's an interesting question, I sort of thought of it, if we're, it'd be like a condominium association, so it'd be more than the open space that the homeowners association would be worrying about, possibly.
Possibly, but I don't think we're saying this has to be a condo type development, right? It could just be houses small clustered on a smaller, technically, it's a more space efficient subdivision.
So the 9.2.17 right on the screen there.
Yeah.
So that's.
More than required open space.
Why don't we say that, and it, but may be waived by the planning board, by the special process.
Actually, it's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Okay, and you can see, I mentioned that, um, that the stormwater here is, um, I changed it from being referencing whatever our old zoning section of the general, of the, um, stormwater rule six point whatever, fifteen, um, to just the general bylaws. That's an example of where I tried to do that throughout, um, okay, this require.
That's weighed by the planning board if the open space is conveyed to.
Um, why don't we just say, i- i- if.
Even more general.
Appropriate. Can I just say?
Yes.
Um.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Um. Uh, Mary, other new comments?
Yes, I have a question on eight point two point thirteen. So our similar current bylaw has 60% open space. This goes down to 20%. And then eight point two point thirteen point three says the, um, the planning board can permit up to 10% of such open land to be paved or built upon. So is that then saying that it's down to 10% open space, true open space?
Hmm. No, 10% of the open space may be paved.
That's her point.
Yeah, so does that potentially get down to what we're getting with the residential conservation clusters? 10% open space?
No, there's ninety, you'd have ninety percent of an open space would be open space, and 10% of the open space could be paved.
Can you say that again?
So right here, permit up to 10% of such open space. So it's not 10%, it's 10% of the open space.
Right, so you, so it's saying you need 20% open space, right?
So if you, so let's call that a hundred feet.
So then it says.
Ten. So of that a hundred feet, ten, ten feet, ten square feet could be paved. Not.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Good question. Gary?
Um, open space can be usable and functional if it's paved. Is there a definition of open space here that maybe what you do is you exclude parking cannot be part of the considered open space kind of a thing? Is there, is that defined in there?
Used for conservation, historic preservation, education. Uh, it doesn't say parking is allowed.
Uh, Cambridge, I know in their bylaws, has a pretty good, there's some very, very good wording about, um, required green spaces and open spaces. I'm just.
Let's not let the perfect be the end of the good here.
Right, um, fine, but it might be something to, let's pass it and something that we could modify next, the following.
Okay, um, well, let's take up, uh, any new comments, um, Sue?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
This is, this is picky, and it's a backup where it says, um, um, it's about the views. Um, shall be protected from road, and it says, or other places. And I really think that could be construed to mean from a private property, which I don't think you want to get in to say that you're responsible for protecting views from every private property.
Is, is the word views in there?
So it's way up in the, it's way up at the beginning, in the, um, in the, the reasons, the purpose, so we have the preamble.
Okay.
It says protect scenic vistas from the towns, roadways, and other places, which I just think that is, I, if it's other public places, I think that's okay, but I think if people can come and say, hey, uh, my back porch is a place, and now you've got something in front of me, and I don't like it. So I just think it's.
So you would suggest adding the word public in there?
I would say, I think that's appropriate.
Okay.
I said it was picky, and I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, it's good.
Have an objection to that? Okay, I'm hearing that, uh, um, Laura?
I'm sorry, I had one more. I'm just looking at my comment in the document. It is in nine point two point one three, number four.
Point two point thirteen.
Number four starts with underground utilities.
Yep.
And I'm proposing to add a clause or substitute may be located within the contiguous open space with and shall be located so as to avoid disturbance to the most sensitive and noteworthy natural resources, which is what we referred to earlier in the document.
Okay, shall be, uh, located.
Shall be located so as to avoid disturbance to the most sensitive and noteworthy natural resources within the contiguous open space.
Did you have "and sensitive" in there?
Not yet.
Most noteworthy and, most sensitive and noteworthy.
There you go.
I'm just repeating that language from earlier in the document. Thanks, Sue.
Yep.
Um, all right, great.
Thanks.
Let me ask, okay, since we do have a motion on the table, let's, since, let's try to vote it all at once, and that is, the other question came up about townhouses. As a last, I think it's our last remaining issue on this. Where is it? Um, somebody asked about townhouse configuration. So this is under the types of buildings. The residential cluster shall consist the following types of dwellings: single-family in all eligible districts, two-family in RD one and RD two, and three-family in general. Um, so I think the question, I don't know who asked. Uh.
I asked it.
Yeah. So, um.
So the reason I asked it is because some of the most attractive and, uh, uh, successful clusters in town are townhouses. So why should we not allow them?
The other thing about townhouses is that they're harder to add on to, and therefore tend to stay, um, less, less costly, less, less expensive. Because if you can't buy it and add another 4,000 square feet to it, or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, do you have a proposal, Chris?
I guess I would amend this further to allow townhouse configurations.
Um, but that, but the, so that's, um.
So it's a single-family and townhouses in all eligible districts, two-family in the RD one and RD two, and three-family in the G, just three districts.
Chris, how about a, um, would you consider, um, instead of calling them townhouses, would you consider them to be the same as single-family attached, detached, or attached? Does townhouse construe a particular style?
I guess you could also say a zero lot line. I suppose it'd be the same thing.
Yeah, I agree, I agree entirely with your, with your, um, the purpose, intent, yes.
That was my question. Do we have a definition of townhouse?
No, probably not.
I like the idea of a zero lot line.
Uh, I don't, I don't think zero lot line is the term you want to use. You'd want to use, um, um, units that are attached by a single-party wall. Um, because that's a fire-rated and sound, sound separation wall, and any two units could be attached, partially attached, completely attached, whatever. It's not about where they sit on the lot in terms of setback. It's about their attachment.
Say that again, Gary. I thought that was a good.
It, it's not about where they.
No, no, what you said about the, the, how we're gonna define this.
Um, well, you said single-family dwellings or units.
Or just dwellings.
Or dwell. Attached with a, um, party wall, single-party wall. You could even.
Why don't we say may be allowed, so they're just to kind of.
You could take out single, because some, there might be a clever design where they overlap a bit, but, um, and you're saying pet special permits, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that'll, that would work well.
Well, they're all, all of this is special permit.
Right.
That, that would allow that. Okay, um. Uh, let me come back to you, Mary, unless you have a comment on this issue, and then we'll come back to you on other issues.
No, I, I don't have other issues. I just have a comment on this issue. Why wouldn't we use the same definition that we use for a two-family with, we don't say party wall, we say, you know, sharing a firewall.
That's a, uh, equivalent term.
Okay, firewall.
Well, or whatever, yeah, said in the, um, but I, I guess then my other question with that is is this saying townhouses in single-resident districts?
Yes.
Yes, it is, but by special permit.
With, so, so the, no, the issue is, though, if you have a, if you have enough area for two single-family districts, so it's single-family homes, you could attach them together. Because let's say you had, i- i- to make it simple, though, you know, you have a requirement for a thousand square feet in, for the lot, and you had 2,000 square feet, then you could have two homes, but they could be together. So therefore, you would have less roads, less parking, and maybe more open space if you did that. Just in the very simplest of terms.
Yeah, it's a very small cluster.
Right. But I think you get, if you think about it that way, you can see how you would have probably, and probably less opportunity for making those things giant in the future. Okay. So I, we have a motion on the table. We've taken some friendly amendments. Um, the motion is to advance the residential cluster with these changes to the public hearing. Um, any other discussion? Are you hearing none? Chris?
Yes.
Uh, Ron?
Ye- yes.
Um, Mary?
No.
Gary?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, great, thank you. Um. Uh, let me make sure I save that. Um, thank you for all your careful read. The last one, we're making progress here, is, go back to my PowerPoint, um. Section, section six, um, so section six, to marry your question about how did we get to the proposed section six? I think, um, Laura and, uh, Chris sat down and basically did an entire rewrite. Um, if I'm, you guys can, can correct me. I think, um, the, um, that the, there are a couple of things. One is all the reading, all the blank sections. Um, and then this issue of, um, performance, uh, prescriptive requirements versus performance requirements that we talked about earlier. And the third issue is that in section six and section 12, we have this, uh, giant overlap between uh, the site plan review and the special permit, um, requirements. Um, and so the proposal, I think, is to have section six have standards and section 12 have process. And there's a little bit of fine tuning, um, uh, there. And then I, I mentioned before that special permit is gonna be referenced as, as required by this bylaw instead of a section just throughout. Um.
So Sarah, one, one correction?
Yes.
Ninety percent of this language is Mark Bobrowski, and we, we went through, uh, a long time ago, all of these standards, lighting, um, site development, uh, traffic, all of it, we went through in quite some detail.
Yeah.
There, there is some tweaking that Laura and I did, and Laura wanted to make it more performance-based, which I agree. Um, but the general language is almost word for word out of Bobrowski.
Okay, thank you.
Agreed. We started, we started with Mark's draft, and then.
Right, so we said, we actually have some things that we've, that, that Chris, um, highlighted to talk about tonight, but before we do that, I would like to ask for a motion to propose that Chris and Laura be given the authority to align the special permit requirements between section six and the new section 12 to create performance standards that support the existing prescriptive standards. Um, but give the planning board greater flexibility to apply best management practices and incorporate peer review.
Yeah, so moved.
Uh. Chris, can I get a second?
Yeah, sure, I'll second it. I'm not sure what it means, but I'll second it.
Well, I think that we're not gonna be able to wordsmith every word of this tonight, and we're trying to get it to a public hearing, not have it perfect tonight necessarily, but I want to give you guys the authority to try to align these things as you already have. As we talk tonight, we're gonna have a few more things to talk about. Um, any discussion on this motion? Um, uh, Ron? Can I get a vote, Ron? Oh, uh, sorry, Mary, do you have, um, a mental motion?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm kind of not clear what, what the ask of Chris and Laura is. I mean, and to create performance standards, I don't, I'm not clear what that is.
Laura, can you give us an example of performance versus a prescriptive standard?
Yes, so performance would say, um, you know, for instance, about lighting, you, you cannot provide, you cannot, um, emit glare, you have to have, um, you have to meet dark sky requirements, things like that, that, um, allow more, uh, they allow some discretion and flexibility in how the, um, requirements are met, but they set the criteria for, um, the standards that you're going to look for.
Can I just elaborate on that as a name of example? Um, I was involved in the Memorial School, and I, I don't know what the lighting standards were in that special permit. I didn't pay a lot of attention to it at that time. But I think it's very overlit, the park, parking lot at the Memorial School, and that was a special permit review. And it probably is because it, we had some sort of, you know, safety standard of how many light poles, but it doesn't really comply with, um, had we been reviewing that, I think there's an opportunity in that particular special permit to have said, let's reduce the number of lights, let's require that they be turned off at 10 o'clock at night, or some other kinds of performance standards, rather than, um, to, in order to reduce the glare on the neighborhood and so forth. That's a very specific example, just to follow up from Laura's. But I think another example of performance standards is on, um, well, the topographic changes, like what's our purpose here? Our purpose is to not blast away hillsides. And as opposed to worrying about how many cubic, having somebody get to 98 cubic yards of rock and not having it apply because they didn't get to 100 cubic yards of rock, you know, um, that our purpose is to not destroy the landscape. And so if we have a, don't destroy the landscape kind of performance standard, um, then we, um, we have.
Flexibility. We get to the, um, landscape sections here. I think the preamble that I tried to write there talks, that's, that's in a performance based language, so it's about landscape is not just something to, what you're trying to do is capture the environmental benefits, so stormwater management, um, shade and cooling, air quality, the things that you're trying to achieve with whatever, um, section you're talking about.
So we are gonna talk about sections. My point in, in this motion was simply to ask that we align the special permit in particular, and, um, just be able to fine tune this once we go through the issues tonight.
So Sarah, you're asking us to say, to get 12, talking about process, how you go through the application, and then, then six is what
Standards.
The standards will be.
Well, just get rid of the duplication.
There is a lot of duplication, yeah, I've noticed that. It's confusing.
Will we have this before the, um, public hearing?
Yeah, sure, we'll do it before the public hearing, absolutely.
Well, that's what we can have, so.
So, and will we have time to discuss, or we're just gonna bring it to public hearing?
We have one meeting next week, so maybe we can get at least an update. I don't know if it could be done by them. That's, maybe not reasonable. I'm simply, we can sit here and go through the whole thing tonight if you want, but I'm trying to help us move along. Um.
Well, I'm willing to work with Chris and get as far as we can get.
Yep, okay.
I haven't.
Next week.
I think it's a good idea, no?
Okay, um, so I have a motion, um, and a second. Ron?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Gary? Gary?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, thank you. And obviously, we'll comments. So let's review the document. We, we came up with the decisions called out. Chris, I'm gonna let
Oh, God.
Let me make this so we can see it. And I don't, so. Um.
Okay.
So the first one is the parking. Mary, you had concerns that the parking requirements have been changed. Is this not the right one?
Yeah, that's the right one, yep.
Yep, so.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Um, you know, the, the version that Chris referenced that we had gone over with Bobrowski has been changed a lot. So again, I kind of don't know when that happened or why, but you know, so, so that's a question. And then since some of these things had been discussed with Bobrowski, and I think we were going to revisit it, but I don't know that we ever did about the truck size that would be allowed.
We actually, that, that one, we, we decided we were going to move that to the general bylaws. The truck, the commercial, the storage of commercial vehicles has now been put in general bylaws, because then it applies more broadly than just, I think you may have missed that meeting, but we voted to put that that in the gen, propose that the truck size parking limit to the general bylaws.
Okay, is that something that the BOS are talking about tonight?
I think they're talking about what to do about it, not necessarily the substance of it.
Because just, just to point out, you know, nobody has to answer, but so now we're saying a parking size can be nine by 18, yet like an F-150 is 19 feet. So we're saying, yes, you can park these larger vehicles, but we're gonna require a smaller size, so that doesn't really line up with me. And so, yeah, and it seems like the parking, so like in the LCD, we had a parking area setback of 200 feet and it changed to 50 feet. I don't know where that came from. And.
So rather than worrying about whether it, where, okay, I think this is how it actually helps us a little bit, sorry.
Well, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm past the where it came from, but I, I, I would like to understand whoever changed it, why? And is, is that good for Manchester?
I can address the parking stall size. So I talked, Sarah, about that one.
Go ahead.
I believe that's in Mark Bobrowski's language is when that originated, but that is a typical stall design size, and it is geared towards passenger vehicles, not towards a commercial, you know, 10,000 ton trucks. So we're not, we're not addressing those, and I don't think that we should be when we're talking about standard parking spaces. That is just a, that's just a design size for a typical parking stall.
It's also a minimum.
No, no, it says you have to be 18 feet.
Yeah, no, understood where it came from, and I'm just saying there's inconsistency of what we're proposing, but with the LCD, the fifth, the 200-foot setback, where is that getting us?
The 200-foot setback, I think, was in the discussion about the LCD and providing more flexibility to go through the site plan process and look at the the best outcome for site development, and it was simply giving more flexibility and a larger possible footprint to kind of work within, but knowing that an intent of the site plan review is still going to be managing the view sheds and, you know, not having encroachment. I think that, that simply came out of the dimensional, you know, relaxing the dimensional requirements of the LCD to allow for development of these uses.
But it wasn't in, it's not in the LCD bylaw, that wasn't in what was proposed.
I thought it was, actually, but I may be wrong about that.
The LCD setbacks were, and the pervious surfaces were, I think you're, Mary's talking about this, this is
Talking about the parking.
Section.
Okay.
So within the LCD parking area, surely within 50 feet of any street, no part. And that's down from the 200 feet that was, so I think that this is a, a, sort of an echo of that discussion that we had around the LCD, and that most of the uses in the LCD require a special permit, and therefore, so I think that's where that's coming from. So I guess the question I have is, is the intent to try to, I guess, as Mark Bobrowski suggested, kind of update these requirements, or should we revert back to those that we have had before? I think that's kind of a.
Well, and just because my other concerns with that, which I had voiced before, is that we're removing the need for safety to, with new curb cuts and development, to not back out onto a street, and I think, you know, that coupled with so many other things, I mean, to me and residents I speak with, we're, we're moving in the wrong direction for all of this. I can completely understand the not wanting to have a lot of impervious surface. But we're kind of, you know, getting away from that when we're saying, you know, with all the building and the density, so, so we're, we're kind of talking both ends, so we're not being consistent with that either, so being the board.
I came up with some language, Mary, that to address your concerns, and that's the second decision on parking we have to make.
Yeah, so with, you know, with the planning board being focused on safety, I think that should be in the forefront of that discussion.
So I think this is your proposed language, right, Chris?
Yes.
So if feasible, single-family driveways on too heavily trafficked roadway or scenic highway should be designated, designed to allow vehicles to enter the roadway front first to minimize conflict with pedestrians and bicycles. I think that's a good addition.
I had that comment, too. This was one that I felt, do feel strongly about, the, actually, the benefits of being able to have, you know, in the village where you have smaller lots and more closely settled neighborhoods are kind of historic core, that you do retain the ability to back out, and when you have a slower-moving or smaller streets, that can actually, that can actually be traffic calming, just the way parallel parking is traffic calming, so I don't see that as a safety issue. I do see the addition of, you know, having to enlarge paved areas in these kind of historic settlements as being detrimental to the town character that we really love, as well as, I mean, or pervious surface is another part of that, but I think it is just reflective of that you, if you require that, you cannot get a town center that is, that looks like the one that we have, where things are, the buildings are kind of close in together, and there are these houses that were developed before cars, where now people back out into the road and just do it. The streets are slow enough, people have good visibility, and you slowly back out, and, you know, it happens all the time, and I think it's, it's within the realm of acceptable urban and, and typical urban form.
Oh, definitely, I mean, on, in existing, you know, that's why it's in the zoning bylaws, because that's, you know, it's only going to happen or be triggered when somebody wants to tear down a house or move a driveway or things like that, so that, you know, we've got that throughout town, the smaller driveways that people can only back out. I mean, that's just, yes, the nature of the small town, that, that's a given. I think when new houses are built or things are changed and people max out the lot with the house, with the building, and then the, the driveway and the parking comes last, and then there's no room left to do it safely, I think, you know, just the, the reason why it's in our current zoning bylaws is they're looking out for the safety of, of the future of the town, so that, that's my opinion on that.
Yeah, I hear you. I think this is one, like, overly lighting that is perceived to add safety, but actually doesn't, because if you're in a smaller road and people are backing out, then traffic is going to slow down to recognize it. So I actually I don't see it as a safety concern when you're dealing with small lots. If you're in a big, you know, two-acre lot, then by all means, there's room to turn around, but I think we should not be imposing this on our small lots. So that was where I was coming from. I'll finish there.
Sue, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to point out that the, the, the reduction in the setbacks, for example, in the limited commercial district is, this is a a case of a performance, where a performance standard works so much better, because if you say it has to be 200 away, yet the flattest land is within that 200 setback, then you're forcing a poor design. So I think it just, by having it a special permit, instead of a site plan review, a, a full special permit, it allows you to make those decisions without having that criteria, that 200-foot or, or other types of prescriptive criteria. Rather, you can decide what is, what is the best interest of that particular site plan. So I just wanted to see it not as a us reducing requirements, but rather to, to make decisions on what makes a better design.
Okay, I want to try to get back to the decisions we need to make in section six here. Gary, you have another comment?
Is there a motion made for, to adopt?
Not yet, I want to. I think we're not quite ready yet. I want to like to talk through these, if you don't mind, talk through these decisions, just for a second. I'm going to start at the top, just to go parking requirements. Are there any modifications to the proposed parking requirements in the section that was on the web for tonight, for today? All right, I'm seeing none.
I just had a question. So the version six that you put out on as the latest version doesn't have any of this in there.
Right, for this action, it, that was a, I tried in my memo to say that the, that the, that the section, this section six for April 26th is the, is the section six proposal. And there was another document that Chris tried to call out, that just, to highlight the decisions. So I'm looking at the, the section six for discussion, April 26th. And we created another document that was just the decisions. So just the decisions.
My only comment would be, at least in the version I have, under accessory uses, is that GVW of 14,000 pounds, but you said that moved to general bylaws?
We moved that to the general bylaws. I think, I mean, we moved it out of section four, let me see. G. Okay, no. Interesting. We actually changed it. We took it out of section four, that's interesting, that's where the. We were trying to find that. I have another slide that asks the question about that. Okay, so, let's. I know Christine had wanted this to be 10,000 pounds. But this is not, this is a.
This is just allowing it as a use.
This is simply specifying it as a parking. If you have that, if you're allowed to have that, that vehicle, how much parking do you need? That's, this is what this table is. If you have a use that allows you to have a commercial vehicle, how much parking do you need for it? That's what this question is. And I think we, I don't know how we determine that. I would have no expertise to know what that is.
I mean, parking space required would have to be at least one, then.
Certainly can change this to one. But.
One for each vehicle, one for, well, you're only allowed one, so it would have to be one.
How about, we could say one.
Aren't, aren't we just moving this out of this table altogether and into the bylaw? So couldn't we strike it?
I think we can. I think we can just strike it, I agree. But.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I think that, okay, good, good thought. The question was, up to four borders and a single dwelling, how many parking spaces do we need?
There are none required, none required now.
There are none required, because it also is a use that could ebb and flow. Someone might have them one year, they might not have them another year, so it's like requiring it for the number of children you have, it's kind of silly.
No one has ever raised this as an issue, so I think we just leave it.
This table may want to align, we should probably take a stab at aligning this table with for, or with our other table. Right? This is kind of like a repeat of the.
They worked together at one point, and then we divided.
Okay. Maybe there's a way to consolidate these things. But let's not worry about that for this. Okay. Sands Court swimming pools, I think we can leave those, customary home occupation. Do we have, do we call that out today? No requirements?
Are we also striking number six, since we've decided to take that out? Or we're proposing to delete that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good call.
I think NA is okay. Accessory uses of the same lot, customary incidental properties. I think we can. Where did these come from, these one space per 10 children?
They're from Mark Bobrowski.
All right, anybody want to propose any changes to these? Hearing, hearing none. Okay, so that's our, so backing out with this addition, is everybody okay with, with this?
Can I make a comment on this? This if feasible and should, why don't we just say, single, take if feasible out and should out, and then say unless allowed by the inspector of buildings with the advice of the planning board, maybe.
Probably the DPW, that we're, we're putting curb cuts in the DPW.
So I would be more definitive, because it's if feasible, I mean, gives a lot of wiggle room, and I would say you, you have to do it unless it's, it's okay by someone else, you know, by the planning board or the DPW. I think that might be a better way to write that, but leave it up to the board.
I'd like to just say state highways.
I agree, that was going to be my comment. Lovely traffic.
Lovely trafficked road, that's sort of a subjective, but state highways are defined. Can I, I'm just, these are, I can undo these.
Sarah?
Yes.
I think there already is a state law for state highways that you're supposed to come out headfirst. I think if feasible for other, other heavily trafficked roadways is what we, we should be focusing on as a suggestion and not a mandate.
Well, we can mandate it and decide, you know.
So Laura's made a case for not mandating.
That's right.
That's what I'm, I'm saying, we could suggest it and not mandate it, but we shouldn't even be talking about state highways, because they already have their own law. Which many of our houses in town don't comply with, because that's just the way they were built, but.
I don't have a strong feeling about this.
How about single-family, how, do we have a lot size difference in, you know, it's really about the D and C and the small lot zoning. the small lot zoning areas, that's where the that's where the difficulty is with the you know, the densest settlement is happening where you really by having to back out, you're going to be paving people's front and side yards. But on the large lots, which maybe is District C and others.
How about if, how about if you just say that the highways, the driveway should be designed to minimize conflicts with pedestrians and bicycles?
I think the question here is the section is on backing.
Backing, yeah.
Oh, it's called backing.
Shall is a mandate. I thought we were not suggesting a mandate.
Well, Ron has, Ron has suggested.
The top one is, the top one is about commercial and multifamily. The question is what you want to do about single family. I also think that the heavily trafficked, and I don't know the state highway laws, but I think I think the intent of what you've got is right. I understand that if feasible.
You say you're feasible, it's just might as well not say anything.
Right, right. Okay, let's, I think we have disagreement on this. So I'm gonna ask for somebody to make a motion to.
You could say shall unless waived by the Department of Public Work.
Right, that's what.
Which is the permitting authority for driveway.
Waived by.
And under what circumstances would they waive then?
Safety, right?
Right.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I feel like that's not getting at the intent that I was going for, which is in the
I think this whole section should be removed completely because I don't know anybody in town knows when this was ever passed, the town meeting to begin with as a mandate. And what, it's true, why would they, why would the DPW waive it? The the problem, one of the many problems with it, it could be very expensive to have to put retaining walls in and extra paving to have a turnaround. It shouldn't be at all.
Yeah, how about we just cut off the whole yellow clause and leave it a commercial, which was the original intent?
Yeah. I'm good with that. Anybody object to that? Mary?
I agree with that.
Well, of course I object to it because it's changing what we currently have, but I had a comment back to the table.
Okay, let's finish this out. Any objections to striking this for now?
Yeah, Mary objects.
I object.
Okay, any other more than mayor, any additional objections? Sorry. Okay, Mary, go back to your table question.
So in our current parking section, we have under the the number of off-street parking spaces, we then have a note at the bottom that says all other uses. Parking space is adequate to accommodate all normal demand as determined by the building inspector with the advice of the planning board. So for the items up above that that we, you said we didn't really have definitions on with borders or those types of things that would all apply to this sentence.
Yes.
So that should be added in somewhere.
Okay, I think that's a good suggestion. Does anybody object to that? Can you put that in the chat, please?
I can, I can.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna say. I mean, I think that there's I think that's that's an example of actually a performance standard rather than a prescriptive standard. Okay, whether okay, the next decision setbacks about parking. Chris, can you summarize what where we are with this?
So.
No part of any parking area except when the driveway should be located within the front yard. And no parking area should be located within five feet of the property. This is about the parking area where you park your car. You don't, we don't. So this is very much about trying to keep the char, we talk a lot about the character of the town and we never really define it. But if you drive down Pine Street, for example, the character of the town is homes close to the road without parking lots in front of their homes. And actually, some communities require that parking be behind the house for new homes. That is a common sort of village type requirement. Like Nantucket has that, or Lincoln has that as a requirement that they require that the parking be behind. I believe that that's considered, like when I was in grad school, that was like one of the things, like park behind the, keep your front yard as a yard. If you think about it, I happen to have a house that has giant, that my parking is right at the front door and it it's unfortunate. You know, it's like it doesn't you come in and all you see is parking. So that I think that's what this is saying.
So the part about the limited commercial district, I think maybe we should not specify anything except to say that parking within the limited commercial district shall be regulated by the planning board as part of its site plan review process.
Right.
I agree. It seems like we ought to strike things in general to the LCD because you're not going to look here for it ought to be on the site permit review.
Right.
Special permit review, sorry.
Are you, anybody have an objection to that?
I'd like you, I think you should modify the beginning of it to say no part of any required parking area.
Oh, good idea.
Should be located within the front setback, which is a normal thing. Where you actually park is up to you, but you you have to at least provide spaces to meet the code.
No, I don't think you want a an optional parking area in your front yard either.
No, the required parking area should not be in your front setback. So you provide two spaces deep in the lot, but if your driveway is there, you can park in your driveway as much as you want. Everybody does.
Parking area, that's different.
Pardon?
It says you can park in your driveway.
But you don't want an optional parking area in your front yard. Not just the required, but you wouldn't want to put overflow there either. So I understand what you're you're saying, but I think we're already covered to say that you can park in your driveway.
Right. And you could park on, if you happen to have a wildflower garden or lawn, you can park on it, but it's not, that's where you're not going to put, we're not allowing people to put parking in their front lawn.
You agree with adding required parking area to begin?
I think we leave it as is.
A residential zone is in your driveway or your parking area? Generally, they're one in the same.
Okay, so that's the LCD, so I think we've done this one. Don't forget, we just voted that that Laura and Chris are gonna clean this up a bit. I'm saving this for tonight in a special folder that's just tonight's stuff, so back to you. Parking area plantings. So this is really a good example of a performance intent, right? Although this gets prescriptive here.
Yeah, I'd say it's prescriptive and it's probably better ones, but I don't know if we're
Yeah, I think this came from, that came from our.
And we don't have any of that now, right?
We do.
But it's very similar.
Okay. And then this is an addition, correct?
Yeah, this is from Laura.
Yes, because we really don't address bicycles much in our current zoning because they are mostly in an area where when it was more car.
Right. I think it's Any objections to? That?
No, but should it? Is this in talking about things other than single family, says for all developments, does that mean?
Well, this is the whole parking section, so.
That was my question as well. I think you have to differentiate that this is for
Commercial and multifamily.
Sure.
Okay, good, good addition. Then there's the whole, you guys didn't change the sign stuff at all, right?
I I did, or maybe I, did I? I gosh, it's been so long now. I mean, I I know I was looking for things like no flashing or internally illuminated signs. And honestly, I can't remember if Mark put it in or. Because I do remember reading others zoning.
There are much better signing ordinances, but I guess over that's next year or the year after.
And many of, and many of them go into general bylaw.
It should go into general.
General bylaws. And we need to reference, figure out what those sections, those prior sections are. And figure out probably, I think we should say as permitted elsewhere in this bylaw.
Yeah.
My comment on the signs is the real estate sign not over six square feet, six square feet is quite large. I don't know that I've ever seen a well, maybe I have, but that seems larger than what's currently out there.
I agree, but it's what's currently in place.
Six foot eight, a two by three, that's not.
That's not very big. Once you add sale pending or
Hopefully they're all temporary signs anyway.
Okay, so that's no change, so let's maybe try to index. Okay, site plan review and special permit, can you guys walk us through a little bit the
So this, actually, this is all from Mark Bobrowski. When I started, when I started reading through exemptions, I wondered why lighting and swimming pools and other water features would be exempted. But maybe they should be, I don't know, seemed arbitrary. I don't think it's much of an issue, so I, I'm sorry I brought it up.
I think we, I think that exempting it is okay. Myself, any objections to just? I'm going to delete the, okay, the next one is, okay, special permanency. Oh, that we will figure that out, six, three.
Yeah, this is probably all goes to 12.
Yep. Right, because there's like all this stuff about how many, it's really duplicative. Because it's talking about the expenses and all that, so that doesn't need to be here. This is, and I think you guys can, this isn't substantive, it's just redundant.
Correct.
This is all this application requirements, this all goes.
I think what we need to do is refer people to section 12.
Yes.
But when you do, when you guys do this, are you going to give some kind of comment so the public knows why we've done some of these things or?
We're hoping to do it with all of, all the changes we're making, yes.
So you'll have some column somewhere, we, the reason we moved it to a 12 was this and that.
Yeah, yeah.
Redundancy or whatever, so it's clear.
Yes.
Okay, and so that then we have general standards for lighting, which we've just talked a little bit about. Preserve night sky, that's, this is the
This is more performance.
These are performance standards.
Yeah, about like preserving.
This first part is just, is just outlining the topics and then you, then each one is in detail.
Yes, right.
Right. So those are what they're gonna be. And then we get in the actual standards, which are more performance based than we have previously had. Right?
Yeah.
Right, correct. I did pull performance based standards for this one.
So I feel like this is a great step forward because there's a lot of these kinds of flashing lights and so I thought these were fabulous. One of the things that concerns me, for example, is in the construction, architecture industry, architects love lighting up their buildings with LED lights. Which, you know, all night long, like purple for awareness and another color for, and I I don't think, when you think about the character of Manchester, I think that's something we at least in my opinion, is like not consistent with, character doesn't add any, safety doesn't add value, so. So I like what you've proposed here. So exactly the same, the the hours of use. Noise standards.
I think this all came from Mark.
Yeah. So topic of changes, let's Well, take it away, Chris, on that one.
So we have to, so I tried to incorporate topographical changes into this. And I quickly realized that that's a bad idea, so I just simply referred to it.
Okay. So we can leave this as this.
Yeah, I think so, yes.
All right. So this is simply saying, instead of repeating it.
Right.
And stormwater, we did, we do the same. Well, first of all, let's take this one, site design should be guided by energy conservation sustainability first principles.
Laura added that, I think it's a good thing to add.
Okay. Historic preservation of existing vegetation. I like is this a new or is this existing?
This is all Mark.
Or, yeah. Limit of clearing, finished grade.
I did make one, a finished grade. Made a comment on the SharePoint document. So the second, the last sentence in number nine, the design of grade changes at the base of existing large trees shall be subject to the approval of the planning board. I recommend we strike that. If you make a grade change at the base of an existing large tree, then you
You're gonna kill it.
The tree, yeah. Having the planning board review it, either you remove it or you maintain it.
I agree.
Me too.
Okay. Okay, traffic management standards, this is all from Mark.
Yeah.
That you guys talked about a long time ago. Okay, curb cuts.
I think these just all came from Mark, we didn't add anything to it.
Is there a decision there that needs to be made?
I'm trying to think what it is. Oh, the width of the driveway. I guess, I mean, that's awfully wide, you know, I don't know whether we want.
It's very wide for a one-way. It just
We just decided on 16 feet for one, didn't we?
Yeah. I'd be happy reducing it for 20 and 18 or something.
These are for special permit reviews.
That's correct.
So they can be waived by the planning board, so they could be also be increased, alternatively could be increased by the planning board.
Well, they cannot, they can be left.
But the numbers you provide here are guidance for people that are reviewing, and I agree with Chris's suggestion of smaller, smaller numbers. If anybody worries about actual safety, this is a safety issue way more than the backing out.
Right. This says in no case shall exceed, so these are maximums.
Right.
Unless waived by the planning board.
But they they've served as suggestions to the reviewing board when they see some numbers there as targets.
So do you wanna make the twenty-two and eighteen?
So I, the only question I have is.
Sixteen, not eighteen's too much for a single, sorry.
I would question it because I would think that it may be have something to do with safety vehicles.
And also, what's our subdivision rules say, this, our subdivision rules are?
For the lim, for limit, for it to be limited to the minimum width. And that this is the outside dimension, I don't think these are, I don't think. That as.
Strike the dimensional requirements, we said the minimum width for safe entering and exiting.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay.
And shall be determined by, and shall be approved.
As determined by the planning board?
Ron wants out.
Thought about good practice here.
This special permit review, though, this is that we're in it, this is, this is, this is under special permit, this isn't.
A nine, a nine foot lane is perfectly adequate for, you know, car driving, but a fire truck is gonna require. A larger lane and it depends on if they have a turn to make. What I think we don't wanna get to is, you know, we. Suburbs that have these thirty foot wide minimum, you know, cul-de-sac.
This is a special permit, curb cut limited to the minimum width for safe entering and exiting. As determined by.
Determined by the planning board in consultation with the fire department and the police department.
Okay.
That seems. That seems okay.
Yeah, cause I do, I do think, you know, some developments are gonna be serviced by large trucks.
Right.
Yeah, equipment, et cetera, so.
Did I, did I miss something? Are we defining maximum curb cut width?
Well, there there was.
I think we just took it out. I think we can get rid of.
You should say police, not DP though, I think you said police. Well, you could say appropriate, appropriate. Safety departments or.
Public safety. You can take out fire department, it could just be public safety.
That way it gives you more leeway.
Take it out later, yeah.
So I think to Mary's question, we've taken out any minimums or maximums, but just ask that it be in a minimum width for safe entering. I think that, but it's as determined by the planning board.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay. Traffic studies required. Post mitigations, all these are for developments in excess of twenty-five thousand square feet, applicant's management, trans, traffic management component, I think that's fine. Okay. Level of service maintenance or improvement, is that what's in there now?
Yeah, this is Bobrowski.
It's not in our current.
I don't think it is.
Yeah.
No, no, yeah, this is all new. I really didn't have these.
Of any of this.
No.
It's referenced above, so I think we can.
Yeah, traffic measure planner.
Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Okay, pedestrian access, bike access. Okay, I'm, I'm get aesthetic standards. Views. Here's where we call up view sheds. Okay. Compatibility with the neighborhood. And landscaping and screening. So Laura, you wanna talk about landscaping and?
Yes, so this, this comment about reworking I had made early on, that just to sort of flag it. That it could use. An update, so typically, the, you know, older version of. Zoning around landscaping refers to it as strictly for screening purposes, you're trying to hide something ugly on the site, and the more current environmentally. You know, kind of best practices is actually the functional. Kind of green infrastructure uses of landscape, so what I have proposed is alternate languages, first putting those. Kind of environmental benefit, green infrastructure. First in the purpose and then followed by the screening, so that you're flipping it and you're, you're emphasizing that the. Functional requirements, functional criteria are the more important ones, that screening is also important, but it kind of comes secondary. So, do you want me to read?
Give us a draft of?
Yes, I did.
Share your screen.
Sure, I can share my screen, just a moment.
Can you share?
Yep, sorry, one second. Okay, how's that?
Great.
So the yellow is my proposed additional text, and then the strikeout is. Striking out what I had previously written when I was still kind of thinking about it, so. Upfront and purpose, the purpose of the section is that through green infrastructure landscaping practices. Using vegetation soils and natural features. The development shall reduce runoffs, treat stormwater at its source, promote groundwater recharge. Protect water and air quality, provide shade and cooling with canopy trees and plantings to mitigate urban heat island effect. And provide landscape amenities that contribute to human and environmental health. And then landscaping shall screen negative impacts from public and private view and shall avoid and or minimize clearing of trees and mature vegetation. Minimize soil removal rate change, that was there from before, I didn't change that, and then I just struck out. This next sentence, which was sort of a repeat of what I had stated up above, and then lastly, some comments again, more towards sort of sustainability principles. Requiring adaptive or drought tolerant species prohibiting invasives. And where you're restoring a disturbed area for kind of a natural growth that we use native plants in those areas.
Okay.
Oh, so who decides if it's a? Drought resistant species or?
The landscape architect for the developer would make a recommendation. Now, provide a plant.
Okay.
So I think this is an example, though, of a performance based. Intent, where when somebody comes with lots of, you know, ornamentals that look like the Hyatt. We can, you know, guide them toward. Native. Species.
Yeah, I think you don't have to be an expert in these, if it's in the bylaw in this way, then you can say, you know, demonstrate, please, how you're. Using water efficient plantings or capturing stormwater, and they can simply provide narratives and. You know, other ways of demonstrating that they've met the requirement, just as they would with any other technical requirement.
One way.
It it would be nice, Laura, if you're on the boil for the rest of your lifetime.
We can say landscape shall be reviewed by Laura Tenney.
Commit to reading everything for us.
This can be turned into sort of a manual you had out to applicants for special permits, so they know what to design to.
Laura, this is, thanks for doing this.
Okay, so I'm gonna. Okay.
Do you want that back? The screen share?
Yeah, I got it, I think.
Okay.
Um, okay, so purpose is gonna be new. Sorry, where did the landscape go, sorry, making you sick here. Purpose. Okay, and then other changes. And you're proposing leaving these more prescriptive things for the moment?
Yeah, I really thought the most impactful thing was to get it up in the purpose. I didn't take the time to really. For the needle and all the rest of it at this point.
We can, we can sort of modify, we get, we leave ourselves the opportunity to modify this.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's white, water, wastewater, underground fire alarm. And do we have sta, stormwater still in here, cause that was in.
Thought I just saw go by.
We just need to check that stormwater, I'm just gonna put it.
So there should not be any references to stormwater?
It should be referenced to. By law.
General bylaw, okay.
Yep, I'm gonna put a comment here. And that's not where it goes, I just did it as a placeholder.
Okay.
Okay. Fiscal analysis, this exists in the current bylaw, right?
Not in so many words, but yes.
I don't know how you do this, but.
Sarah, does this mean that the planning board would hire a peer review?
Yes.
Full analysis?
Yes.
It could, I think it depends on the, the, don't you think it depends a little bit on the?
Sure, on the size of it, absolutely.
So we require that as a condition of the development, I mean, that they, they submit the fiscal analysis and we simply peer review it, sorry, Mary, didn't mean to interrupt.
Could be one way to do it, right, well, the applicant should provide analysis of the cost of development. The applicant should identify the order of magnitude estimates, which for fire, police, and then the planning board is conducting the analysis based on whether or not. I mean, these are inputs, right?
So I don't, I don't think a planning board has the financial expertise to do the analysis, so maybe it can be stated in there that. It is a peer review when needed.
Or FinCom could.
That's true with all of these provisions, actually, but it wouldn't hurt to put it in here.
Right. So can I put in?
I think what you wanna say is the planning board shall require a fiscal analysis of.
Yeah.
Post development. If it is the applicant that does it, and then the town has the right to peer review it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that peer review is elsewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just making a note, make sure here, review applies here. Okay, so we'll cross reference to make sure that the peer review does apply to this, does that make sense? Okay.
There was just a typo in that paragraph.
There are many.
Yeah, no, I will read it out, but I just saw it right now, so it says. The long term benefit and cost to shall maintain. So you gotta get rid of one of those.
To the town.
Get rid of shell, yeah. Cost to maintain a positive net physical position.
Oh, that's good.
Okay. So it says we can waive them. And that we have enforcement with the performance standard with. Peer review. Do we require, do we allow a performance bond?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is additional performance standards for the LCD.
But why do we need additional performance standards? When we're requiring all this stuff anyway?
I think that's a good question, I think we didn't have it previously, so we needed it, but now I think we've got it covered.
So what? Design and operating guidelines.
Well, it's in the water resource district, so they're gonna be, all this is going to apply.
So you're saying this is redundant?
Yeah, I think it's all redundant.
Okay, and it's just this section, I'm gonna just make that smaller, so.
Yeah, it's not a big section.
Yeah, it's just, it's drainage runoff.
Why don't we talk about it when you get here, but yeah, sure.
Gary, you're in.
Okay. Now, that's in comments, sorry. Okay, so topographical changes, Chris.
Okay, so we have gone through a major rewrite here, because the existing topographical changes in site grading. Is complicated and prescriptive. And. And vague. And. Complicated, yeah, I guess I said, that's, that's all, and it's complicated, so we just tried to simplify it. And make it performance based. And instead of trying to talk about interior lots and, and exterior lots. Just make it all the same for the entire lot.
Okay, and I agree, we should, we did move, we actually, those are now in section two. Both of those, I checked, earth was already there.
Good.
Oh, good, so we can take it out of here.
Um, so I think that's fine, I don't, I was wondering why we are exempting. Driveways, parking areas and utilities for septic systems. If our purpose is to ensure that the natural contours of land not excessively be altered. Driveways can be a pretty big piece of that, and I don't know why we are exempting driveways, parking areas.
There are strong reasons.
They're all, they're all required for housing, you can't build a house and not have a driveway or not have a septic system if it needs it, so I think the.
Have to, that you have to blast away the hillside to do that necessarily.
I think if you don't allow these things, you're doing a prescriptive taking of the land. And so there'll be a lawsuit.
I don't, I don't see it as a taking, but, well, I'm sorry, Mary, you had your hand up and want to butt in. I'll just raise my hand.
Mary, go ahead.
So. If Chris could explain, I, to me, this, this is a drastic change from what we currently have, and I'm not saying that what we currently have. Is, is great, but maybe if we can walk through some things. Currently, what are exempted activities are, are. Septic utilities and green activities and authorized structures, so. Our, our current, is our current definition of authorized structures residential dwelling and commercial structure?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. And.
I mean, I don't know what an authorized structure is, it's not, it's not defined anywhere in the current statute, so it's.
Yeah, so I, I would just like some more clarity on that, because. Yeah, I guess, just if we could, well, whatever, but, so. Then this also removed, it's a special permits for land clearing and site clearing. Was needed for excavation, filling and grading. But that was removed, so I don't know why that was removed. Now we're only saying it's required for. The bullets that are listed below, and then the bullets that are listed below. Pretty drastically changed from what we currently have. Like I had mentioned at last meeting, that, you know, the removal of a hundred square feet of ledge versus what we currently have for the twenty feet in the setback. and 100 in the interior. So I think the, we currently designate setback and interior because setback is getting closer to other people's houses, and so we want more of a buffer for that, and then the cubic yards of material was 100 and now 20. So, I mean, I, I guess I'm how were these numbers calculated to change and why?
So what, the answer to part of your question, this, we tried to make the setback requirements more performance-based. Why would you worry about somebody removing 100 cubic or 10 cubic feet of earth from within the setback? And the answer is because it would affect drainage on your neighbor. That's the only thing it would really do. So what we say is, I guess if you go further down, it says that you, that you can't change the grade within, uh, where is it?
Within more than, greater than a hot 10 feet from pre-construction grade.
Well, no, is there something about the drainage within?
Oh, probably says drainage. It made it up above, say, promote.
No, there's something about within 10 feet of it. Did we take that out, Laura? I can't remember.
Yeah, there was, yep, the drainage.
I'm gonna exercise my prerogative here. I don't understand here if we're exempting these.
There it is, great changes of 3 feet within 5 feet of the property.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, but if we're exempting the driveway, and if we're exempting the commercial structure, and we're exempting the primary residence or accessory structure, what else is there?
What's left?
I think we should take out all those exemptions.
I don't think, I don't think you can.
I agree.
Sarah, can I speak?
Um, wait a minute, hold on.
Why, everyone else is talking about this?
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the idea of this, people need to step back a bit. The, the first, the existing law is absolutely Byzantine, and nothing should be compared to it, because there was never any logic put forward as to what the quantities were that were developed by John Newhall when he wrote it to begin with, and he presented it to the planning board, and literally, I was there at 11:45 PM, and he did not tolerate discussion. Everybody was exhausted, and it was voted in five minutes.
I don't understand how that happened.
You have to also keep in mind, the average-sized lot in our town, if you add all the lots up, is a half-acre lot. To divide it up into X perimeter areas and central areas, that's what you do when you're clear-cutting hundreds of acres of land out west. You, you divide it up into second, into areas like that. For half-acre lots and such, it, it, that sort of separation doesn't make much sense. Um, the exemptions, the, the idea of this to begin with was not to encumber people from moving land around on their property. That's what people tend to want to do anyhow. The, the, the starting point was, yes, you can build your house and your driveway, so these exemptions should stay. Um, you can build your house, the idea was you build your house, you build a driveway, you probably might want to put a swimming pool in, maybe a tennis court, but when you start to want to add a basketball court in addition, I don't think anybody wants to see you take down a whole cliffside that's 30 feet, 60 feet high, because some people in town do a lot of drilling and blasting to remove ledge. The idea was anything excessive beyond normal uses of residential properties should then be subject to some review. It was not to encumber people if they move a small amount of dirt or a small, not small, medium-sized amount of dirt or ledge or what have you, because people, they bought their land, they might want to manipulate it in some ways, and it's fairly normal. So that's my, my blurb on it. So some basic exemptions need to exist here, so people could do normal things. It's when they're starting to do more and more and more where the town should maybe weigh in.
Um, okay, Sue.
Um, thanks. I think I was gonna, I think I was gonna say that I think the original intent was for excessive manipulation of the land beyond the driveway, the house, and the utilities. It was really to keep people from, you know, doing more than is needed for, for general use, so I don't need to say more.
Um, Gary, do you have another comment? I have a comment too.
I lowered my hand.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I didn't? Oh, sorry.
Okay, um, so I'd just like to actually suggest another way of looking at this. Um, and that in this, despite, I'm not, without arguing the merits of what you've just said, Gary, are, I'm getting to the point right now in my own head, at least, I think that the changes that have been proposed to Section 6 are great. I think that this topic could torpedo the effort to clean up Section 6. Because people, for whatever reason, whether it was 11 o'clock at night or some other reason, uh, it will be a hot topic that could torpedo this section at town meeting.
Sarah, there was never any advocates for this law, though. No one ever spoke up advocating strongly for this.
Let me just finish, Gary. May, and you may well be right historically, I think people are wary of change, and this one feels rightly, to me, that it's a change that, that could um, torpedo all the other good things that are in this section. Um, so.
So Sarah, one thing, these exemptions currently exist.
I know.
The default is.
No, they don't. They don't quite exist like this, though.
They do, actually.
Um.
Did I make a suggestion?
But there, yeah, but there's also, um, they, there are some additional requirements for the um, residential accessory.
Well, they, they have an interior lot, special permit, and exterior, you know, there's this
There's a I'm not disagreeing, I'm not, I'm not arguing the merits of what, what, of this alternative or the, or the shortcomings of the existing, or arguing that there aren't shortcomings in the existing. I'm now talking strategy for getting this thing through a town meeting.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah, Laura, go ahead.
Um, I think the best part of what we've written so far, my own personal view, is the purpose under 6.4.1, the ABCD, those are the intent and the character we're getting after. I, I agree that, you know, all of, everything under 6.4, we can, we can, you know, argue about what's the right amount of cubic feet, or what's the right metrics to use, whether we should do any grading in the site, in the setback, and perhaps if we um, just change the purpose and leave the rest of it as is, bad as it is right now. Perhaps that shows an intent that we're coming back for this, but right now, what we're trying to do is make our purpose clear. Would that be acceptable?
Very acceptable to me. Um, the other option, I'm sorry, I'm, I know, I see other hands up. The other option will be to propose this and see what, if we get pushback on it in the public hearing. And see if, if we.
But I think you're right that it's it's a, it could be really problematic, and we, we have bigger fish to fry right now, perhaps, than.
Yeah, that's my concern. Um, Mary?
I, I, I like Laura's idea. I, I think that the intent of this original bylaw is to, you know, obviously, people can do what they want with their property, but it's also to ensure the integrity of the neighborhood and the town and the abutters and all that, and so if you start messing too much with these um, allowances of cubic feet and all that, I, I, I do think it's a bit dicey. And I agree with Chris, I mean, all of these uses are in our current bylaws, you know, the authorized structures, I guess, which would be houses and commercial drives, drives activities, which is a weird reference, I guess, for driveways. So, yeah, I like Laura's suggestion.
All right, Gary, it's getting late, um, and we're almost done with this. I think. Gary, did you have another comment?
Sorry, um, I, I just disagree with you, Sarah, that we shouldn't, on any of these laws, we should, shouldn't worry too much about um, this one, could 616 could upset the apple cart for 6.0 up to 615. That's potentially true for everything we're doing. If someone says, let's, 616, let's hold it, or let's freeze it and, and keep it in place, that's easy enough to do. It doesn't, I don't, I'm not fearful of that, I think, and I think Laura suggested bring it to the public hearing, and let's, as a board, we'll be voting in the end anyhow afterwards.
All right, I'll take them. Uh, let's just, um, I think we've are there anything new to add to that discussion?
No, I move that we take this language as proposed to the public hearing, but be prepared to uh, retreat to Laura's suggestion.
Okay.
If we get pushback.
Um, so I'm gonna take a motion to uh, advance Section 6 as discussed tonight with the changes and with the change, the review authorized previously to the public hearing with a update, a, a, a new version, if possible, for our next meeting on Monday, if possible. Um, so, Sharon, you get that, a motion to advance Section 6 as discussed tonight, and with the mod, review by Chris and Laura as voted previously tonight, with a update, at least verbally, at our next meeting.
You're talking about the whole Section 6?
Yes, I am.
The whole enchilada.
The whole enchilada. Which is basically
Well, what about, what about what Chris just proposed on this, taking this to public hearing?
Same thing, it's the same thing.
Okay, you were talking about
The topographic changes included, proposed topographic changes, section included.
She encompassed my, my motion.
Okay, um, so.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I guess I made the motion. Not supposed to. Okay, any other discussion? Laura, you have your hand up?
Yeah, there's one grammatical thing in an earlier paragraph that's been bothering me, but if Chris and I are deputized, I can clean that up later.
Great, thank you. All right, any other discussion? You are deputized. Um, all, uh, Ron? Section 6? He's still figuring it out. Uh, Laura?
Yeah, my screen's freezing. Hope you can hear me. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Chris? Okay, Laura, yes, Gary?
Yes.
Uh, Laura, uh, Mary?
No.
Anybody else? Um, I vote yes. Okay. Um, all right, great work. A couple other things here. Um.
Can you put up the schedule for a minute?
Yep, I'm going to, a couple more things here on my presentation. Uh, as I went through things, in Draft 8 was this, this pro, in Section 4 of Draft 8 was a prohibition of boats and commercial vehicles in the side setback. We talked about it and said, oh, it should only be within 5 feet of the side, your, of the side property line. But it does not exist in any of our existing zoning, and I'm just trying to figure out if, and we included it in our general bylaws recommendation. But very quickly, does anybody have, I also searched the minutes for a long time ago to see if this, where this thing came from. I'm just wondering if anybody has any, who was here before, has any recollection about why it was suggested in the Draft 8 bylaws? Because it's a little Byzantine.
I don't know. I suspect this is a solution in look of a problem which doesn't really exist.
I
Do you remember, Mary?
Um, I believe it was in Mark Bobrowski's draft, and I know we talked about him, the boats and commercial vehicles extensively. And at that time, it was voted to it, I'm assuming this is with the parking, right? The parking of these?
Yes, parking and the side.
Or, yeah, yeah. So it was voted, um, to keep it in, so I don't know when it was taken out.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking is that if we move it to the general bylaws, we have to delete it from zoning, which is why I went looking for it in our current zoning. So we'll let that sit right now. We don't actually have to have a public hearing on general bylaws, and if the board is, we can have a conversation with the Board of Selectmen about whether they think that's important. I think there was broad agreement, last time we talked about this, that it belonged, and if we were going to regulate where I parked my boat, or you parked your boat, it should be, be in the general bylaws, not in zoning, and Mark Bobrowski agreed. Um, but we do not need to remove it. You know, anytime we move something to the general bylaws, like junk cars, you have to delete the appropriate section out of zoning, which is, so we don't have to do that. Because it was, it's not in our zoning, unless somebody can find it, and I cannot. So, okay, thank you. Um, uh, the other thing is, I'd like a motion to authorize Chris and me to in, figure out someplace where we should insert language in the motions to authorize the town clerk and the planning board to make non-substantive ministerial revisions to ensure that these changes reflect the correct section referencing, numbering, and to correct typographic errors, typographical errors. Um, so I'm asking for a motion to authorize Chris and me to find the right place to insert this in a motion for town meeting.
Are, are you saying to give?
I'm only trying to figure out where we, to just say, it may be that we have to have a separate article to do this, but, or maybe, it may be that we have to have it in every article that we move forward at town meeting for these changes, that, but that we insert this language. Now I'm starting to write motions, there are articles that would appear on the town meeting warrant, and I want to put this language appropriately in the right sections, and maybe it's in every section, I don't know.
No, my question is, is, are you, is this, are you proposing this as a bylaw that the town clerk, I'm, I'm not clear on what this is.
No, I'm saying the article on town meeting floor would be to strike Sections 1 through 4 and insert the following Sections 1 through 4 and to authorize the town clerk, blah, 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 to, so probably every motion that where we're striking large sections would have this added in. I, I need to figure out how to do it. I don't know how to do it. So rather than us all figuring it out, I'd like us to just be okay to have us figure out where we stick this thing administratively.
It's just formatting, it's allowing us to format.
So it, um, do we have agreement that we can figure that out?
I'd make the motion that this, that we be authorized.
Oh, moved.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second, Chris, the second, any other discussion? Um, Chris?
Yes.
Uh, Laura?
Yes.
Uh, Gary?
Yes.
Ron? Yeah, he got it. Ron, he's frozen again.
My screen is freezing, but I hope you can hear me, yes.
Okay, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, um, and timeline, okay, I vote yes as well, timeline, um, uh, here's our timeline, um. I, we, last time when we had our non-meeting, meeting, we did talk about putting, having a second, oops, a second hearing here on the 23rd. In order to do that, we need to post a public notice for that hearing by tomorrow. So I'm going to suggest that we actually not do that, and we try to do everything in, at the 17th and 18th, and if we then we may revise what we put to town meeting, and that we not do this. So unless there's an objection, I think we strike this hearing on the 23rd. Any objections? Or does everybody love public hearings so much? Okay, there we go, it's gone. Okay.
I have something to say also, but the article to the cricket.
Yeah, I have.
Oh, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah.
Just before you, before you get off the schedule, I'm getting some intel here from tonight's BLS meeting that the warrant for the planning board needs to be ready by 5:16. I don't know what that means.
I mean, it needs to be before the public hearing.
Or, or wait till the fall.
It, because I have it in writing from Greg, that was the 20th.
So that's what I'm hearing, so, uh, let's, uh, let's, um, let's drill into that tomorrow, Sarah.
Okay, I mean, I have it in writing from Greg, that was the 24th. Okay, I mean, I have it writing from Greg that was the twenty-fourth. So.
Yeah, so I.
Yeah, the problem too with that is that, um. The Z B A accepts their permit. Applications on, um. The sixteenth, which is why we held our hearing on the seventeenth. So it would be after their May applications were received.
So, uh, we'll, we'll drill it. We'll find out what, what that really means tomorrow and, uh.
You know, to have another meeting then. Okay, um. So then the last thing I'd like to do is just author, um. Authorize Sarah, there was a little bit of confusion last time, so authorize Sarah, Chris and Sue to make. These changes talked about tonight and other administrative changes. To prepare material for the public in advance of the public hearing. To prepare an article for the cricket, to coordinate presentations for the public hearing. And take any other actions to support this effort. Um, and I guess I will add and to key, and to do, and to keep the board. Apprised. Um. I think otherwise we, it, there still remains, I mean. I, I know it's, um, all of the. Public documents say draft on them, and that took hours to, you know, get them in PDFs and. Have them with the word draft on them so that it, um, which is what was requested by the town clerk, for example. Um, and then also to prepare an article for the cricket, which is required, um, and I know Gary, uh, Chris, you want to update us on that, but could I just get a motion to? Uh, for this, um, these changes so that we don't have a, um, a fire drill on this. Unless somebody wants to make a other proposal.
Well, Sarah, can you add to that, that? It's, um, these items are distributed to the planning board before, you know, published in the cricket or handed out or that the planning board gets to see these?
Well, I think they are on SharePoint. They are, you, they're, they are on SharePoint. But yes, we can, I've continued to, to do that.
No, but so like for the article for the cricket that we would see it as a planning board before it goes to the cricket or. The, you know, handouts for the public. Hearing or.
I don't think that's realistic. That's why I've made this, that's why I've made this motion. It's not realistic in the, to have every single thing that goes out. Be reviewed. By the group. That's my concern.
Sarah, I don't feel it's necessary, but I do feel the chair or co-chair should review it before it's published. That's all I care about.
Certainly can add that in.
If it's published ahead on, on SharePoint, I would welcome comments from the board, but, uh, I, I, again, in the, with the short timeframe, um. I agree with Sarah, we need to move on this. We can't be bogging ourselves down in process. It's, it's, it's becoming harder and harder to get this stuff done and, and the timeline, we've had issues with links to, uh, webs to, um. Uh, Zoom and we're, we're behind now a week.
And now it just.
We gotta trust ourselves a little bit.
Well, I, my, my point was that, you know, it's hard to say things are coming from the planning board if the planning board doesn't really know what they. All members of the planning board don't know what they are and agreed, you know. I, I mean, we're trying to do things in a time crunch, which, which is not an ideal way to do things.
So I would hope anything that's published is not something new to the planning board. It was something that was discussed and vetted, um. Uh, I would hope anybody writing an, an article would not be introducing something that the planning board is not aware of.
So, can I say?
Why you update on the cricket?
So I actually wrote an article for the cricket to be published. This week. It's not from the planning board, it's from me. And it's, uh, about. The history of zoning. It's not about what we're proposing to do. Uh, I would like to continue with a series of articles, and in fact, I, I'd really like it if other people would write some of them. About specific topics having to do with the zoning changes. Um, this was just a background piece, uh, and because we are running out of. Dates when the cricket's going to be published. I just went ahead and. Sent it in and said it's for me personally. So I just want everyone to be aware of that. We would like to see it before it's published. I'd be happy to, to share it.
Thank you, Chris, for doing that. Um. I think also one of the challenges is that, that, um. That, the, the time, there's a lot of lag, you know, the cricket, it has a four day time, you know, they, Tuesday is the date and we meet on Mondays and. Um, it's also hard, I get comments on things and, you know, then it's up, uh, for example, the, um. Other things we've written. You get comments and you don't, you have to make a decision about whose comments to take. So, um, we do the best we can, I think, um, and I do think it's, um. Stronger for advancing these changes if we have it come from the planning board. Um, rather than. Not to diminish your effort, Chris, in any way, um.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
That's why I proposed this, um. This motion, um. And I have tried extremely hard to be very forthright about the changes we've made. So, um, I don't think we've tried to sneak things through or, um, do them without, with malintent. So, um.
That gives you nothing.
If somebody has a better proposal than what I've done here, then. You know, we could post a lot of meetings between now and. When we, to review things. That was, that's really the alternative. I think. Because we have to prepare materials for the public hearing, which is in two weeks. And, and it's, it's virtually impossible, at least for my, my schedule to get them done on Thursday for a Monday meeting.
Do you want to hear us so moved?
Yeah.
Yes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Um. Uh, uh, Gary, um, I'll take a vote, Gary? Or any?
Yes.
Discussion, yeah, okay. Any, first of all, any other discussion? Um, okay, Gary has voted yes. Laura?
Yes.
Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Uh, Ron?
Yes.
Mary?
I'm going to vote no, just because I, I. It's not that I don't trust anybody. I, I, I. I think it's a bad process.
And I'll vote yes, and I, um, well, thank you, um, for that. Um, and I would like to just say that it does take courage, Mary, to vote no. So I appreciate your willingness to. Exert your, your voice. Um, okay, that's all I have on my agenda for tonight, um. With a minutes, um, or posted only this morning, and I'm not prepared to review them, um, that was on the agenda. For tonight, um, unless somebody else is ready to have. They have some. I will have some comments on them, but I haven't had a chance to enter those comments anywhere. Speaking for myself, I don't know, Ron, I'll, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, so for our next meeting, we'll probably, uh, be talking regarding that A N R, which we received, uh, comments from town council on, um. Um, Sue, I would assume we're having another planner's report for next week.
Um, I didn't see that on the agenda, but I can prepare that.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of that, um. Okay, some minutes to approve, and then Sarah, if you can give me the bylaws, we want to, I don't know, six point four, anything we want to discuss that we think we can fit in next week. I will get that on the agenda, um. And hopefully we won't, uh, be here for three hours.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Otherwise I'll move to.
Laura has her hand up.
Uh, Laura, sorry.
Yeah, it's quick. Um, for whatever meeting minutes we're reviewing next week, could we just have the list of those dates? Because it's, I'm, I'm pretty foggy on what we have and haven't passed. Thank you.
Yeah, we need to do that. I need to fill that table. Okay. All right.
I move, we adjourn.
All right.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Anybody not move? Otherwise we'll adjourn. I'll take a roll call. Okay, see you next week.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks, guys.